I'm gonna wait till it goes. Yeah, cuz that's live feed.
Okay.
I tried to remember everything.
Not easy to do.
No.
There we go.
Good evening and welcome to the September thirteenth meeting of the Stowe Select Board. Just a quick reminder that this meeting is being recorded. In the room to, well, in the room tonight, we have Courtney Fresha, Ellen Sturgis, myself, and our new board member Hector Castandos. So, welcome. I just stumbled over your last name after all of that.
You're good used to it.
So, welcome to Hector. And I'm gonna open it up to public comment now for anybody who, or for anyone who wants to make a comment that is not on the agenda tonight. All right, seeing none, I will move on to board member comments. I will. Alex just put his hand up. Oh, uh, okay. Alex, what can I?
Sorry about that. This'll be be quick and maybe save time for later, but just wanted to thank everybody for consideration for the school committee.
Nope, sorry, Alex. Hang on.
When I applied or submitted my interest, I was unaware of any other parents who had, uh, had submitted interests. So, after reviewing others who have submitted their interest, I just wanted to withdraw my interest and, uh, yeah. So, show my support for Maureen. So, best of luck. I think the town is in great hands and school committee is in great hands. So, thank you all for your time. I'll talk to you.
Thank you, Alex. Sorry, I thought you, I thought that was something else. Um, okay. Thank you.
What else would it be?
Thank you. All right, so I will, um, I would like to say a couple of things. First, I wanna say thank you to Linda, Deb, and all of the election workers who made this recent election on September sixth a success. I know Denise will probably talk more about that later. I wanted to give a quick note to the board. I did meet with Lori and Tom Farnsworth yesterday. We have a draft that I'm gonna bring to the board for the next meeting of the charge for the new EDIC. We'll wordsmith it a little here. Planning Board's gonna wordsmith it a little there. We're gonna meet one more time and then kind of figure out what each board said. And then we'll bring a final copy back to the board so that we can sort of push out, uh, the new EDIC charge. And then I wanted to, um, convey some sad news on the death of Betty French, who is a longtime Stowe resident and a volunteer with the Stowe Food Pantry, and which is where I met her. And so I wanted to give some thoughts and prayers to her family at this time. And Courtney, I think you wanted to?
Yeah, I'd like to, um, recognize the passing of Don Rising, who was a longtime resident of Stowe. Don was one of the founders, one of the founding members of the Stowe Conservation Trust in nineteen seventy-seven. And so was likely on the board of directors for forty-five years in that organization. Don was also the first captain of the Stowe Minutemen when they reformed in the nineteen sixties. And Don and his wife donated, uh, placed a conservation restriction on their property on Treaty Elm Lane, which is a lovely, it was a trail along the Aspet River, which is near the town forest. Don was also a member of the Track Road Committee for many years, maybe as many as twenty years. And, um, instrumental in the purchase of the track road easement. And he was a car collector and was also national president for many years of something called the Brass Lights Club, which was a, um, a club of car collectors, I think. Cars used to have brass lamps. So, um, we'll miss you, Don.
Thank you, Courtney. Did you wanna say?
I think you said it all. It's a real loss to the town. Forgot to throw it to Marsha.
Did you have anything else you wanted to add tonight? Or did I want to comment before I ask anybody else? No, okay. And? No, Hector?
When did we discuss emails that we might have received?
Uh, correspondence.
Okay.
Well, that you received personally?
Well, through my new account. I barely had my account five minutes and I already got an email. I was like, why? That was fast.
I think in correspondence. Sure, I don't know.
Somebody just asked me when we would discuss again the code of conduct and I wanted to make sure that.
Oh, uh. Yes, I, I, we, I also have gotten it. It will go in the correspondence for next week. Yep.
Great.
Yep.
That's all I have.
All right. Uh, did we have any recognition? It's just on there. Okay. Then I'm going to turn it over to Denise for the town administrator's report.
Thank you. As of September eighth, we had eight COVID cases in town for a four point four percent positivity rating, still well under the state and county average, which is over seven percent. Our annual flu clinic will be held at Pompo on Saturday, October fifteenth. More information on that will be forthcoming in the next week or so. I want to thank the Stowe Fire Association for putting on another great touch of truck event. Also to the police and highway department for participating in that event. There was a great turnout. Everyone there seemed to be having a great time, especially when the helicopters landed. Created quite a crowd watching that. I brought my niece and she was utterly thrilled watching the helicopter land, so. I'd also like to thank the fire department and the fire association for putting on the nine eleven memorial and dedication ceremony this past Sunday morning. It was brief, but a beautiful ceremony. And I encourage everyone to go and see the new nine eleven memorial out front of the fire station if you have not been there. As Megan mentioned earlier, I wanted to thank Linda and Deb on another smooth election, especially when having to deal with the mail-in voting, early voting, and two elections at once. I urge folks who request a mail-in ballot to get it in before the November eighth election date. Part of their issue this past election was people were dropping off their mail-in ballots up until eight o'clock on Election Day, which is legally allowed, but it just adds so much more time. The ladies were here till well after one in the morning counting ballots. So, I just encourage people to get them in early if you have them. I would like to recognize Steve Nadeau for his work to receive a one million dollar grant for the Lake Boone Dam repairs. For those of you who have not seen that press release, we put that out last week. From nine thirty to ten thirty AM on the first Wednesday of each month, I now sit at Pompo for anyone who would like to speak with me. It's called Discussions with Denise. Began last week and it was extremely successful. I met with seven different residents on a number of matters. So, I look forward to meeting more residents each month and hearing the concerns of the citizens. The Board of Health lifted the water ban last week, but continues to ask residents to do their part in conserving water. Obviously, we're not out of the drought status, but the figures they received were positive to remove the mandatory water ban. And finally, yesterday, the Library Designer Selection Committee met and interviewed candidates for the owner's project manager for the library project. We hope to have that contract awarded soon. And after that, we will start working on architectural services. So, that's it for tonight.
Excellent. Thank you. We have one appointment tonight. And so we have Robert Norton. Thank you. Hello, Robert. Bob, Robert. Bob, great. And so you have expressed interest in filling the vacant unexpired term on the Historical Commission?
Yes, correct, yes.
Excellent. Do you wanna tell us just a little bit about yourself?
Well, my, uh, family moved to town here in nineteen fifty-six when I was in junior high school. I've always lived in town. And I've been on a few different things. The fire department, I've been on the police department. And I've run my business in town.
Excellent. Well, this is, I think this is a great fit for you then to be on the Historical Commission, given your depth and breadth of knowledge.
I'm almost history myself.
All right, does anyone have any questions for Bob? No?
Have you got any special projects you wanna work on first? That the Historical Commission is doing?
I'm gonna be going, I've gone to two of the Zoom meetings with them and I'm gonna be going to look over the West School with one of them. I'm working on a separate project of my own. I'm on the High School Reunion Committee for Hale High.
Oh, wow.
And I'm trying to, I'm having a thing drawn up now to put a permanent marker up by the old fire station cuz we're not happy with the marker that's on the building. And I'm gonna come to the board with that later.
That's great.
Once we have it resolved at our meetings.
Excellent.
Can I ask you one more question?
Sure.
Can you remind, for people who don't know, when was the last year Hale High School was here?
I graduated in the last class in nineteen sixty-one.
Wow. Right, that's right. Excellent.
Most people nowadays don't even know, a lot of the new people didn't even know there was a high school either.
I don't know that I did until now, so.
Right where the old fire, right where the old fire station is. That's where the high school was, yeah.
Wow. Well, thank you so much, Bob, for stepping up. I will take a motion from you, Hector.
I move to appoint Robert Norton to the Historical Commission to complete the remainder of an unexpired three-year term expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you so much, Bob. All right, now we are moving on to a public hearing. Hold on, I'm gonna read it. I just have to find it. Okay. Do you have to call the public hearing into session? I'm calling the public hearing into session.
Well, you read the motion.
I read it first.
Someone has to make a motion to enter into the public hearing. So, you can read it and ask for a motion.
Got it, got it, got it. The Select Board as the Cable Television License Issuing Authority will consider and vote on a proposed renewal cable television license for Comcast of Massachusetts Three Inc. on Tuesday, August twenty-third, twenty twenty-two, at seven PM at the Stow Town Building, Warren Room, three eighty Great Road, Stowe, Massachusetts, pursuant to Section six twenty-six H of the Cable Act, forty-seven USC, Section five forty-six H. The public is invited to attend and provide comment, if any. Can I have a motion to enter into public hearing?
Okay.
Some will.
Nope, you just, you just have to.
Oh, okay.
That's the easy one.
Okay.
We need a second.
All right, the public hearing tonight. Oh.
Yes, we need to.
Sorry, we need to vote it on. So, Courtney, yes, she made, wait. So, Courtney made a motion, you need a second.
Right. Second.
Okay, so Courtney?
Yep.
Roll call vote.
Aye.
Chair, aye.
Aye.
Hector, aye. Ellen, aye.
Aye.
Ellen, aye. Okay. The public hearing is on the proposed contract renewal from Comcast that was discussed at the August ninth meeting. Jonathan, do you have any further comments tonight for us about that?
No, this is the first. I'm hoping you'll sign it, then there'll be the Verizon one.
Fantastic. Do any Select Board members have any comments or concerns about this?
I'd just like to make a brief.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, on the ninth, Jonathan gave us a good synopsis and my understanding is that this is an advantageous to us, but fair, uh, contract. There are some, um, things that are getting cleaned up that, that, um, were sort of a long time coming. And so, it's a good thing.
Okay. Thank you. No other comments? Hector? No? Okay. Does anyone in the audience have anything that they would like to say? Or any comments, questions, anything? I mean, can I close the public hearing this quickly?
There is no one on Zoom with their hand raised, so you certainly can close the public hearing.
All right. I will take a motion to close the public hearing.
So, move.
Second.
And we'll do a roll call vote again. Courtney?
Aye.
Hector?
Aye.
Ellen?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. That is unanimous. All right. Now, we're returning to the regular meeting and now I take the motions for these, okay?
Now I get to read.
Yep. So, I will take a motion. Gonna, we can move that each section as one? It's just one motion he's reading? Okay. All right, so all of them.
I hereby move that the Board as Cable Television License Issuing Authority vote as follows. One, to grant the subject cable television renewal license with a license renewal term of November first, two thousand twenty-two through October thirty-first, two thousand thirty-two to Comcast of Massachusetts Third Incorporated, Comcast. All terms and conditions contained in the renewal license have been agreed to by Comcast. Comcast, by and through its authorized representatives, shall execute this renewal license agreement as set out on the signature page of the renewal license. Two, to recognize and acknowledge the PEG Interactive Program Guide Letter from Comcast dated August fifth, two thousand twenty-two, and signed by Comcast Senior Manager of Government and Regulatory Affairs, Gregory Franks. Three, to recognize and acknowledge the Senior Citizen Discount Letter from Comcast dated June twenty-third, two thousand twenty-two, and signed by Comcast Senior Manager of Government and Regulatory Affairs, Gregory Franks. Four, to enter into and execute the Town of Stowe Comcast PEG Access Remote Video Return Origination Location Decommission Agreement. All terms and conditions contained in the agreement have been agreed to by Comcast. Comcast, by and through its authorized representative, shall execute this agreement as set out on the signature page.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that's unanimous. Thank you, Jonathan. Thank you, Bob. Thank you, Lisa, for all of your work. We appreciate it. And we'll see you for Verizon.
So, they sign it.
They'll sign it all.
We'll sign it. All right, thanks all. Have a lovely evening.
I did have one question about the signature page. Should I have brought it up earlier?
No, I, we can talk about it. I'm only thinking it's because, yeah. Hector's name is not on the signature page, right? So, we may just have to.
We can either just cross it off and add you or as long as the other three sign, then it's a jargon, you're fine.
Yeah.
So, either way.
All right. Sorry, still scrolling. I know. Oh, my God. Just trying to get to the next part. So, the next thing that we are gonna be discussing is the Callings Foundation will be here presenting information on their next major event, which is September seventeenth and eighteenth. It's a World War One aviation event. Denise has put a memo in our packet. I don't know if you wanna go over some bullet points of your memo. I know, now you have to scroll through eighty-five pages, so sorry.
It's eighty-six.
Thank you. Wow, that's great. And.
I'm happy.
We're having Hunter. I think I saw Hunter.
Hunter and I think Rob are both on.
Um, maybe you can just read it after they give a quick overview?
Whatever you'd like to do. So, I'm there, so I can either.
Do you wanna just give your quick bullet points of it? Cuz I think some questions that people may have were answered in this memo. Certainly, I will take a comment afterwards. But I just wanna make sure that we have as much information out as possible.
Certainly. So, this is regarding the Callings Foundation's September seventeenth and eighteenth aviation event. This is the first event that is occurring under the most recent settlement agreement, which allows flights to resume at the American Heritage Museum with specific conditions. The conditions are that the use of the airfield in the flights must be connected to the museum. All flights must include aircraft on a list agreed upon by the Town and Callings Foundation. That list can be updated with prior notice of the town. Such flights shall occur no more than four weekends per year from April first to October thirty-first, or no more than eight days per year, and only when the Select Board or its designee have been given at least fourteen days' advance notice. Flights for inspection and maintenance activities and pilot training and proficiency will be permitted, but only if necessary to facilitate the passenger flights, exhibitions, and demonstrations. The total combined number of flights shall not exceed two hundred per calendar year. All flights shall occur between nine AM and six PM with exemptions for emergencies unless prior approval from the town administrator. No flights conducted by the Callings Foundation will fly over residents in Stowe at less than one thousand feet above ground level, except for takeoffs and landings. And no unusual altitude flying or maneuvers are permitted over residents in Stowe. The Callings Foundation will provide quarterly reports to document the number of flights that have occurred. The Callings Foundation will provide the town access to all reports from equipment inspections and pilot examinations required by FAA regulations. The Town and Callings Foundation will mutually agree upon an expert to advise the Select Board as to the adequacy and safety, maintenance, and inspection reporting that's provided. And the Callings Foundation will not seek to expand its use of property beyond the terms of the settlement. As I stated later on, the Callings Foundation has been excellent to work with through this process. This folder here contains all the information on the pilots, the individual planes, the documentation, the safety records, FAA reports. Anytime I have a question about the documentation, I'm provided the additional documentation or information. So, from what I can read through our settlement agreement, they are in compliance with that. It is occurring at a, quote, "major event", which is a requirement of the settlement agreement. So, therefore, I would say they are taking the necessary safety concerns and they are taking all steps to address the requirements.
Um, Ra, I see Rob.
Yes, I'm going to.
Excellent.
Good evening.
Hello. Would you like to give us an overview of what will be happening?
Yes, absolutely. First of all, Courtney, thank you very much for memorializing Don Rising in addition to all the service he's given to the town. He has been a, was a member of the Callings Foundation trustees since nineteen seventy-seven as well. So, he will be deeply missed by all of us. This weekend's World War One event really focuses in on the Newport Twenty-eight, which was recently restored, which is America's first fighter plane. It's the oldest flying US military aircraft in the world today. Joining it will be a SPAD thirteen, which was America's first second fighter plane. So, these aircraft were the two aircraft used during the First World War predominantly by the Allied Expeditionary Force. Many of those pilots were from this local area. A great number of them had attended Groton, Harvard, and so forth. And even some of the pilots that were lost, one was from Concord. So, they were very much local to the New England area. And this event's designed to educate people on what it was like at that time. It is not a major event like you would think of of the World War Two reenactment that we do in October. We're gonna have a maximum, it looks like about twenty-five World War One reenactors and a small encampment there just to showcase that history, the living history side of it. And a museum from upstate New York will be bringing a World War One tank called an M nineteen seventeen. We do have one on display in the American Heritage Museum, but it's a lot easier to have this one come in than to bring ours out. The flying activities will be weather dependent. These early aircraft are very much weather and wind dependent. So, if the conditions are favorable, they'll be flying at some stage during the day. We don't have any set times yet because we have to see how the weather is going to be at that time. If the winds are not cooperating, they'll do a ground run just to demonstrate to people what these aircraft were like at that time to fly. There are no pyrotechnics, no cannons or anything like that that's gonna be part of it. So, it's really the focus on just these two airplanes flying.
Thank you. Board members, do we have any questions on this? Yes, Hector?
I see that it says the Town and Callings Foundation will mutually agree upon an expert. Has this expert been agreed upon?
It has. When the settlement agreement was enacted, the board voted me as the representative. So, I have met with the expert. We've Zoomed twice to discuss the flight reports and the safety reports and how I should translate those. So, and he is, the Callings Foundation has made him available anytime I have questions or need follow-up information.
And is there any other examinations required of the pilots besides the regular requirements for any pilot to continue flying that they had to meet?
No.
For this activity?
Anything else? No? Courtney? No? No, okay. Do you have any questions that you would like to?
Yes.
Okay, can you just say your name?
My name is Ernie Dodd, Level Sudbury Road. I'm on the ZBA. This is not concerning the ZBA. I also served on the planning board for sixteen years and handled the Callings application for his Heritage Museum. And agreed to the final findings with the planning board and Selectman and the Callings Foundation. My issue, I have no issues with his flying and everything. That's all. But also advertised with their flying has happened in two other occasions, too. Tank driving experience and tank rides available. The problem I'm bringing up is noise. A number of people complained to me about the noise generated by the tanks. And I don't know if you've heard this or not, but I feel the noise being generated by the tanks is a violation of the agreement. I gave you a copy of our agreement highlighting the areas of what the definition of noise is, pyrotechnics and what's allowed during their major events and their demonstrations, et cetera. During the major events, they have two that they can use pyrotechnics. In the noise, cannons, you hear it all over the place. And two other major events that noises, they can violate the noise agreement without the cannons and the pyrotechnics. However, for the other demonstrations and exhibits, which I think they're allowed two per month, they, they are required to abide by the noise generation as specified in the agreement. And I'm sorry, but the tanks, they make a lot of noise when they're running around their course. And it's much greater than the chainsaws and leaf blowers and motorcycles that you would normally hear. I live across the lake. I have about eight hundred feet of trees between me and the lake. I hear the tanks. They're not objectionable to me at that distance, but if you were along Barton Road, it would definitely be objectionable. It's definitely violating the agreement. And I encourage the board to enforce the agreement and prohibit that from happening. There were two events in the past and they had the same thing. One was in May and the other one was in August, I think it is. May and August, where they spent two days of running around their tanks. And that is a violation. Now, if they, they're allowed to have five tanks there and demonstrate them, but how they demonstrate them is up to them. They have to meet the bylaw. I mean, the agreement, the noise. And I think they're violating that noise requirement. And should be prohibited from doing it.
Thank you, Ernie. My question on the noise specifications is My question on the noise specifications is the way that the agreement was written, if there's no, there's no decibel written down in here. And so it basically just says if it's a lawnmower or whatever, so who's measuring what the actual sound is?
Reasonable. That's noise is always a problem, even in our bylaws.
Yeah.
It's difficult to.
I think it's difficult to enforce this part. Like, I completely understand what your issue is. My question would be in how we would enforce that part of it unless there is someone going and measuring the tank noise, because what would be loud to me might not be loud to somebody else. And so I, I want to just make sure we're painting it with.
I'm sure that some of you have heard complaints from some of the neighbors along Barton Road. I'm surprised if you haven't, because I have heard.
Yes, Denise.
So in the handout that Ernie handed out, it does say all four major events can, can be noise generating and they do not have to meet the noise specification. This is a major event that they are holding. It's not to the same scale.
Not a major event, only four a year.
Yes, this is one of the four.
This is not one of the four.
It is one of the four.
But it is one of the four.
They can determine the four. This is one of their four events that he is considering a major event for this year.
The the four major events were identified during the Planning Board's public hearing. One was Race of the Century. I can't remember all the names, but this was not one of them.
So I don't see that in the agreement. I see that one is focused on World War Two, one is on World War.
One.
One, and two remaining major events that cannot have pyrotechnics. So he, when the request came in, actually back in June, it was listed as a major event for calendar twenty twenty-two.
He's already had two tank events, like I said, in May and August. What were those? Because those were tanks also making noise.
Well, I think, if I may, I mean, I think we can certainly, I can speak to Rob about this. I would say the event that we're here to discuss tonight is a major event. And by the, the first agreement, they are allowed to have noise generating demonstrations. I can speak to him about his other events and going forward, the non-major event noise. But I think for this specific one, it is covered under the first settlement agreement.
I will get back to you on that. I need to discuss some things with the past Planning Board members that signed this agreement.
Okay.
Yeah, come and see me. We can talk about it.
Does, did any of the other board members have anything else to say about this?
May I just underscore that issue that we don't have a decibel level?
Yep.
And remember when we were building the school, we actually brought out measurements because there was something we wrote into it about the amount of noise, so it's something to consider going.
We found the crickets make more noise than our specailes.
That's what we found out.
Well, so it's a relative, noise level is, is relative to other ambient sound at the time.
Yeah.
Which is where lawnmowers and leaf blowers come in.
Right.
Right.
Okay, if there is no, no other comments from anyone else? No? Okay, I will take motion then.
I move that all the necessary conditions and requirements have been met per the June twenty-eighth, twenty seventeen, and October first, twenty twenty-one settlement agreements for the Collins Foundation World War One Aviation Event scheduled for Saturday, September seventeenth, and Sunday, September eighteenth, twenty twenty-two on the Foundation's museum property.
Second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye, and that is unanimous. All right. There's Malcolm. Thanks, Rob.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Great, we are moving on. Our Assistant Planner, Malcolm. Hello, Malcolm.
Hello, everyone.
Hello, is here to provide an update on the MBTA Communities Revised Guidelines.
Great, I'll get right into it. Am I able to share a screen here? I just have some slides that are updated from the last slides I presented here.
You should be able to, Malcolm.
I can, okay. Okay, just wanna make sure that the title slide is what everyone sees here and not the PowerPoint. Like, next slide window. Everyone see the title slide all right?
Looks good.
Yep.
Great, okay, so. Good evening, everyone. My name is Malcolm Reagan. I'm the Assistant Town Planner here in the town of Stowe. The, a few months ago, I provided a short presentation on new multifamily zoning requirements under the State Zoning Act. I presented that based on a initial draft of some compliance guidelines that had been issued by the Department of Housing and Community Development. Stowe, along with many other communities, it wrote feedback letters in response to those draft guidelines outlining several concerns, particularly some vague language around relationship with Title V and septic requirements and wetland permitting. And also, just quite frankly, the, the number of units that were required to be allowed by right under those previous guidelines. Hearing a lot of that feedback, the Department of Housing and Community Development has significantly revised the draft, the, the compliance guidelines. So I'm just gonna be giving a real quick overview of what's included in those guidelines, as well as just something of a refresher on what these new zoning requirements actually do. So some key takeaways, both about the, just the legislation that enabled this and these new guidelines. The main thrust of this requirement is that communities within the broader metro Boston region, that's defined by MBTA communities, I will get to what defines those, must allow some number of multifamily housing units by right. This means without a special permit requirement from something like the Planning Board or zoning board repeals or otherwise known as discretionary permitting. The legislation requires, or the amendment to the zoning act, rather, requires that this district allow a minimum gross density of fifteen units per acre. The penalty for not complying with this is a still no, would be a town being no longer eligible to receive MassWorks infrastructure funding, as well as some other grant funding pools may available by the state. Additionally, the Department of Housing and Community Development has been relatively clear that non-compliance could impact other grant eligibility as well besides those listed in the actual NAPLAN legislation. There are some interim compliance steps that we must take to remain in compliance in the near term and remain eligible for things like that MassWorks infrastructure program, major one of which we've already done, submitting a community information form to the Department of Housing and Community Development, DHCD. A key takeaway though for the change is that the guidelines have substantially lowered Stowe's requirements for the unit capacity here. Under the original draft, the reasonable size requirements had created a district that needed to be fifty acres, the fifteen units per acre, created basically a floor of seven hundred and fifty units allowed by right for Stowe and many communities like it. This has been substantially lowered now to a hundred and thirty-nine for Stowe in this latest draft. So a quick overview of some of the changes that have been made to the compliance guidelines. A new category of community has been established. This is the adjacent small town, which is actually defined as either a population less than seven thousand as of the twenty twenty census, which Stowe does not meet, but you can also meet this by having, I believe it's less than five hundred residents per square mile, which under those, under that list, criteria, sorry, Stowe does qualify as an adjacent small town. There was a minimum land area requirement for adjacent communities in the original draft that has been removed for the adjacent small communities. The minimum district size now is only established by a district that's big enough to meet the unit requirements at fifteen units an acre. Another big change that was included here, inclusionary zoning, so this is requiring some units in the developments to be deed restricted affordable for permitting. That is now explicitly allowed where it was kind of silent on it before, but it is capped. I'll get to that in a later slide here. An important edit too, with some much needed clarification about how to actually calculate the minimum unit capacity in a proposed district, and some additional technical assistance will now be available from the states to go through that planning process. And finally, an important change was more specific language about how these requirements relate to Title V septic requirements, various well permitting requirements, and also wetlands. In the previous draft, it sort of sounded like the gross density had to be fifteen units an acre, regardless of any limitations imposed by these. That was basically unworkable, and it sounds like the state has recognized that and really tightened up that language there. Again, I'll get to that in a little more detail shortly. So first off, a lot of people might hear MBTA communities, think that doesn't apply to Stowe. There is no MBTA service. But changes in legislation have defined Stowe and every community seen blue here as an MBTA community. This includes any community that hosts service as well as any that are adjacent to commuter rail service. So before I get in some greater detail on the changes, I thought we'd work just going over why this was done using some of the data presented by the Department of Housing and Community Development. With files are a couple of slides that they have used in a recent presentation. Housing crisis is a term that's become meaningless to a lot of people because of how often and for how long it's been thrown around, but it really is an apt term. And Massachusetts is now, having been in an average housing cost state in nineteen eighty, is now the fourth highest housing cost in the nation. That is for almost all forms of housing, but two bedrooms are an example given in this graph here. And the housing production has substantially slowed since prior decades. You can really see it in this graph right here. There has been some recovery after the two thousand and eight financial crisis. The rate of new housing construction still pales in comparison to even really the late twentieth century. And finally, there are economic implications for this, not just for the housing costs that people have to incur themselves, but on the, the quality of Massachusetts workforce. You can see in this bar graph here just how low the rate of permitting in metro Boston for new units has been compared to a lot of communities that the Department of Housing and Community Development considers comparable in its workforce characteristics, economic dynamism, and so forth. So that's why this was, this was done. As far as whether the approach is effective, that's, you know, leave that to the jury, I guess. So a little overview of how this was done and what the enabling legislation actually says, I've said a lot of this already, requires fifteen units per acre, subject to limitations from the Wetland Protection Act. That was, like I said, made more specific in the new guidelines. And required that the district be within half a mile of an existing transit station. And that's important for Stowe because there is no area that's within half a mile of South Acton commuter rail station. So that has some implications on location requirements. Here is just so everyone sees it, the language actually speaks to the penalties for non-compliance with these new zoning requirements. Although, not unsaid in all this, which has been said by DHCD, it is the implication that other grant funding may also be withheld or may, or community could be less attractive to receive that funding if the zoning requirements are not met. So just going over the minimum unit capacity and how it's been changed and how it's calculated for Stowe. Fifteen units an acre is a requirement for all communities. The existing housing stock percentage is dictated by what kind of access to MBTA service the community has. So for Stowe, being an adjacent small town, is required to create a district with a capacity of five percent of the existing housing stock as of the twenty twenty decennial census. That comes out to, as I said earlier, a hundred and thirty-nine units now from the seven hundred and fifty in the prior draft. And as I also said, the minimum district size has been eliminated. Had been fifty acres before, now it only needs to be large enough to accommodate those hundred and thirty-nine units of fifteen units an acre. That's nine and a half acres now down from fifty. Another quick just overview there of how the, the percentages vary from different kinds of communities depending on their access to MBTA service. Not as relevant to Stowe here, I thought I would mention that the percentage, the size for other towns has also been tweaked to limit it to one point five of the developable land area, which is a term that they've defined in the guidelines elsewhere. So it's not just for Stowe. These changes have been made, but significant changes for all sorts of communities. So as far as the location goes, the guidelines state that the district, as far as it's possible, should be located within half and a mile of a transit station. But of course, there is no part of Stowe that's within half a miles. Actually, it's close, the northeast corner, but not quite. So some language has been provided there for cases just like that. The district, there's a lot more liberty in where it may go, but the DHCD does ask that it be located somewhere that's consistent with what they call their sustainable development principles. I could go on forever what that means, but in the, long and short, they would like to see these districts near existing downtown, village centers, shopping centers, or other areas of concentrated development, and especially those with ready access. By vehicles, but also preferably by cycling and pedestrians to those transit facilities. So basically, there is no clear cut requirement of where this district would have to go in Stowe, but there are a lot of areas that become more attractive when you consider those location requirements or criteria that the state is asking for. A change like I had also mentioned has been made to the inclusionary housing. That is now explicitly allowed, however, it is capped for most communities and most circumstances at ten percent of the units. For reference, that is actually exactly what Stowe zoning does now. So that is something we already have implemented. It is only applicable to developments of six or more units, but you can imagine anything developed under this would probably be six or more units. In certain circumstances, that inclusionary housing may be raised to twenty percent, but for the most part, that requires a district to have existed prior to these guidelines. And just to show everyone, really, here's the, the specific language, making it clear that the density is still subject to wetland permitting and septic limitations. They were very clear in this draft that even if such compliance means that proposed projects will be less dense than fifteen units an acre, that, that's fine, as long as the actual zoning itself allows fifteen units an acre. Limitations that arise from a lack of water or sewer infrastructure or adjacent wetlands are still in effect, basically. So a quick timeline of what this means for us now, this has also been changed a little bit since our prior draft. Previously, an action plan for compliance needed to be submitted to the state by the end of December this year. That's now been bumped back a month, so we have through the end of January. That's a relatively simple form, really, that's being requested, that mostly just details the kind of outreach engagement the Planning Board or other boards plan to do in anticipation of creating this new district. And crucially, the act, the final compliance timeline has been kicked back by one year. Prior to this, it had been December thirty-first, twenty-four. Now we have until December thirty-first, twenty-five. And that only applies to adjacent small communities. So that's a lot of information. A lot of the frequently asked questions around here, around this topic have to do with the relationship to Chapter Forty-B. Might refer to as a comprehensive permit. This does not have any relation to that. Forty-B is very much still in effect. Communities are still expected to, you know, work toward that ten percent of housing being on the portable housing inventory, subsized housing inventory, rather. And unlike Forty-B, this new zoning requirement does not require production. It doesn't require any kind of scheduled production. The zoning must allow this kind of development, but there are no penalties based if, for whatever reason, that construction does not occur. And also crucially, this does not mean that the door is completely wide open to any kind of developments. The Planning Board may, may still require site plan review, which is a basic review of things like vehicular access, vehicular access, and pedestrian circulation, some design features, screening, a lot of the things you'd normally see the Planning Board conditioning into decisions. With the difference being that this is not discretionary, and at the end of it, it's expected that approval will come as long as the conditions are, can be met and are reasonable. So there is still a standard of review that may be required for, for this district. So some other, just to quickly summarize this, I have some bullet points here. I think you've heard me say all these things already quite a few times. A lot of the same things are still in force that I presented on a few months ago. The big difference now is that instead of looking at a fifty-acre district that allows seven hundred and fifty units, we're looking at a nine and a half acre district that allows a hundred and thirty-nine with some specific allowances for inclusionary housing. Site plan review and any limitations arising from wastewater or wetlands considerations. So that's a real quick overview of this. I highly recommend anybody interested in this to check out mass.gov/MBTACommunities as the sort of clearinghouse for any and all information related to this. Where you'll find the, the guidelines as drafted, you will find all kinds of information about the compliance timelines and steps that must be taken, links to some technical assistance that will be made available, FAQs, as well as an interesting presentation given by DHCD about a week ago now, where they really dive into a lot more detail that I have here. So I think that's really my update here. I'm very happy to answer any questions if anyone has any.
Yeah, I, I had a quick question, and I, about the wetlands area. So when you are laying out the district, right, ostensibly a town could, if they were trying to skirt this, put a district in wetlands?
Not in. They have something about this, there's a definition of developable site area.
Okay.
The district itself may not, may partially contain some wetlands.
Got it.
But if the whole thing is located within it, for instance, DHCD does have enough discretion to say that that would not be the compliant district.
Good, good. All right, that was, thank you so much. I am thrilled that you had a better update from the last one. I'll ask questions in a second. Yep, I just wanted to say thank you. All right, any other questions from the board? Ellen?
Does the hundred and ninety, a hundred and thirty-nine units, they have to be all in one contiguous location? Is that the idea, or is that, could it be spread over different parts of town?
Actually, no. Under the original draft, it was required to be, it looked like it would probably be required to be in one contiguous fifty-acre district. They do have language now that a piece of the district that needs to be at least five acres to count toward it. So very, it's theoretically possible that we could do, for instance, two five-acre pieces, discontiguous pieces of this. But the district, but a piece of the district has to be at least five acres for it to count toward the overall area and capacity.
Great, thank you. Hector?
I just need to summarize to make sure I understand this. Basically, what they're telling us is we need to build new housing within a half a mile of the train station that has fifteen units per zone or per district, is per acre?
Per acre, actually.
And if we don't have anything that's within half a mile to build on, where do we build it?
We don't, we don't, and we don't, we do not, there's no part of Stowe that's within half a mile South Acton. So that means we have some greater liberties on where we locate it compared to a community that does have stations within its boundaries. But the DHCD does still ask that it be located near existing village centers, areas with decent transportation infrastructure, that sort of thing. There does seem to be some flexibility in interpretation there, but hopefully, you know, the, that discussion can be had with DHCD well before any compliance timeline so that we, we would know full well in advance that the location was suitable for them.
So does Pilot Grove meet that requirement?
It could, certainly. I, I think there's an argument to be made, definitely. But it's not, it's unclear how they may react also to, I don't know, they still have some, some. they still have some liberty to reject areas that are zoned onto existing developments that's unlikely to be redeveloped soon, but they are not super forthright about how that kind of review will work. Unfortunately, yeah, for communities like this where there is no area within half a mile, there does seem to be quite a bit of discretion from DHCD on what they consider compliant. So I do think it could comply with it. I think even that parcel is close to ten acres itself, but uncertain right now if that would be suitable to DHCD.
So it doesn't specify that whether it has to be new construction or it could be existing?
It does not specify that because there's no specific production requirement that that hasn't been specified.
Okay, thank you.
Denise, so I just wanted to clarify, Hector, the requirement is not that we build the houses or units, it's that we set the zoning to build houses. So there's not a requirement to meet the one hundred and thirty-nine units just to have them available in a zoning area.
Thank you.
Any questions?
No questions. I'm glad they reduced the requirements and I'm grateful for your synopsis. I thought it was useful and thorough, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Malcolm. Oh, sorry, Ernie, you have one question?
Can we take advantage of anything that may happen on Athens Way or the golf course? Get credit for the one hundred thirty-nine?
Well, possibly. I do think that the fact, well, first off, the fact that they're both being developed under different regulatory procedures, one being a comprehensive permit, the other one being a discretionary special permit from the planning board, that may be taken into consideration even if that construction's already begun once a district is laid down there by the state, but I can't say for certain right now. That being said, I do think both of those locations would probably be far enough away from connections to transit infrastructure and bike infrastructure, that the state might not consider that, meaning those sustainable development principles that they've laid out, but I also can't say that for certain right now.
Because that's land we have that's available for development, especially Athens Way, there's a lot of land back there, and.
For reference, the Athens lane development that's currently permitting is something city effective one hundred and forty-ish acres. This requirement is for less than ten acres.
Yeah, I know. But it'd be a good spot to have, have it. Because it's not gonna be industrial.
All right. Thank you, Malcolm. I appreciate you coming. All right, I'm going to ask, unless the board has any issue with this, moving our next three bullet points after, I think I see all of the candidates for the school committee here. I see the school committee members, and I would like to move on to that. So does anyone have any? No? You good with that, Hector? Good? Good? Awesome, fantastic. All right, I, how do we wanna lay this out? I think the school committee, I know, I just don't want the school committee members yelling from the back. So if you guys wanna bring your seat, just a chair up, kind of in this direction. Yeah, just in this area.
Rich, nice to meet you.
Hello, nice to see you. Great. Hi. So I know who these three Stowe school committee members are, but if you would just like to introduce yourselves, really, I'm gonna say your name.
Hey, hi, everybody, I'm Leah Viverita.
Hi, I'm Karen Devine.
I'm Brett Chakal, and Leah's the chair.
And so why we are here tonight is because Stephen Rubenstein, who is the fourth school committee member for the Stowe contingent, resigned. And so, in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter Forty-One, Section Eleven, we need to jointly appoint a candidate to fill that role. So Alex let us know earlier that he was removing himself from consideration, so we have three candidates tonight. And it's Maureen Mazone, is it Mazone? Mazone, Scott Powell, I'm assuming, yep, and Justin Slattery. And we, I think I, what I'd like, how I'd like to do this is have each one of the candidates sort of give a quick, this is why I would like to be considered for this appointment. Then I will open it up to questions from the school committee and from the select board. And then, after we're done asking the questions, we feel, I can take a motion at any time for an appointment and from any of the members of this, these two boards. I would then call for a second, any further discussion, and then I would call for a roll call vote of the group. So, since we're gonna go in alphabetical order, Maureen, would you like to give us a?
Sure, yeah, I'm Maureen Mazone. And first, I wanted to thank Mr. Rubenstein for all he's done and the hours that he's given to the school committee. I know, especially over the past few years, it's been kind of crazy, and he's put in a lot of effort over the past five years. And I also saw his article in the paper last week, and he gave advice to those applying for the remainder of his position. And I wanted to thank him for that because it gave me some reassurance that I looked at the right committee for myself because the skill set that I have, I think, matches what is needed for the school committee. I spent fifteen years of my career at PWC as a risk and control specialist. So what I did there was I went into major financial institutions and reviewed their policies and procedures, made sure that they were staying up with the most latest regulations and laws that they had to. I had two different hats there. I could be an auditor and review and test that their policies were appropriate and effective, or I also played the consultant role where I went in and reviewed and gave them any advice on how they could make improvements or become more efficient or effective by changing any procedures or policies, adding controls. And my current work now, for the past year and a half, has been really volunteering throughout the town. I'm on the Stowe PTO, I'm the secretary this year, fundraising chair last year. And I'm, my goal really is just to meet as many people in the town as possible right now and recruit them for the PTO and get as many volunteers as possible. But at the same time, I'm trying to understand like what everyone's feelings are about the school committee. I mean, the school itself and the community itself, and so I feel like I'd be a good ear to the ground for the committee. I'm also part of CPAC and SAFAN as well, so for the younger families too.
Mr. Powell?
Sure, I'm Scott Powell. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to apply for the vacant seat. I have also a professional background, although I worked at an insurance company. But I think more importantly, is I have a passion for education in general. Just from the point of view, my wife and I, for a while, we owned a preschool, and I've actually served on school committee before when I lived in New Jersey. So I think I understand pretty well what the role of the school committee is as far as making sure the schools are well-run rather than trying to run the schools. So it's definitely an oversight role as far as, you know, keeping an eye on things. When I worked on the school committee before, you know, I took every meeting very seriously as far as going page by page, line by line, through all the reports and, you know, often even, you know, especially during my first year, asking questions of the administration, saying, you know, why are we spending money on this? Why are we spending money on that? You know, trying to not get overbearing, but understanding, again, just trying to, in the oversight role, make sure that the schools are being well-run and in a physically responsible manner. So that's kind of the background I bring, is, you know, like I say, I understand the role really well and, you know, I've gotten to know the community for a little while. I was serving on the Nishova Dollar for Scholars. And so I think this would be a really good opportunity for me to get more involved in the community. I have two children, both of whom have had special needs, IEP plans before, so I also have that perspective. I know Maureen, she's on CPAC, I think she might have had some interactions with my wife, Michelle, over the line. So, education and children, definitely a passion in my household, and so I think it's a really good opportunity to use those skills and help the community.
Justin Slattery, thank you for your time and for having me. And it sounds like we have two great candidates, so good luck to both of you, and thank you for volunteering. My wife and I have lived in Stowe for about ten years. We have two children, ten and eight years old, third grade and fifth grade at center school. I'm actively involved in the community now as a volunteer. I coach and/or help run all of the youth programs that my children play in, inside the district and also outside of the district. I am currently in insurance and investment. I own my own practice running an insurance and investment company. Both of us are Boston College graduates, and I have a degree in finance. My, my goal for joining the committee really was there was an open seat. I was worried no one else would apply. I think Maureen had mentioned that. And just after everything that you guys have been through over the last two years, no one was trained or educated for that. So I know it's an incredibly difficult position, and I think some of my experience in volunteering and also in business will help the students and the district. And we also have a whole host of family members and relatives that are currently in public education, retired principals of elementary schools, current teachers that are still in the program. I've never had any experience in public education, but I think that their experiences, that I've been able to talk to them over many years, I think will help me and help the committee as a whole.
I'm gonna let the school committee members start with the questions, as you will be working with one of these applicants. So whoever wants to kick it off?
Great, I got, I have a question. One thing is, Denise, is the, didn't you want the screen to have everybody's face on it? Can the people at home see the faces?
They can, it's just for this room, so that the candidates aren't looking at their own faces when they speak. It can be a little intimidating.
I wish you had done that earlier, because that was, that's why I moved to the back. I felt like it was an award show or something.
Now you're gonna be on, because you're talking, so.
Okay. Did you want them to answer in order?
I think, sure, yes, that would probably be the most equitable, yes, to do it in alphabetical order, so.
So as you guys likely know, diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging topics are common in Massachusetts educational policy, and there's even a advisory committee called DEIB that advises the committee, helps us figure out and be mindful of these issues. So what role do you guys believe that DEIB issue should play in our school? And take a beat if you wanna think about it. Or if you're ready to speak.
And Maureen, you'll start, yes.
So, I have thought a lot about this with the PTO as well, just from, like, how do we make everything equitable? And I was in charge of fundraising, so it felt like I was asking people for money all of the time. But I, I had a lot of questions on my mind of like, how do we not make it like we're asking for money all the time, but we're able to be out there helping the families that do need help in the school? So I, I might have the acronym wrong, but I reached out to NASJA, is it? And I want to meet with them, at least from a PTO perspective, and get more information on like, just simple things, like what kind of words should we be using? How, like, really simple things, like, should fundraising go on the end of an agenda instead of at the beginning of an agenda? So I think really I would go to the experts in like NASJA and get advice from them just because they are dealing with it, they have the people that can share the feelings and all of that, so I would do that.
Yeah, I mean, I think diversity is a very big topic, you know, everywhere in this country at this point in time, and I think it is an important thing to be teaching our children. The challenge in a community like Stowe, which I would argue has not a lot of diversity, is how do you get that kind of exposure to the children? And, you know, again, I don't think it's the committee's responsibility to have the answers, but definitely coming up with ideas isn't such a bad idea. So I mean, off the top of my head, one thing that comes to mind is, is there any opportunity for our kids to interact with kids from other communities so that they have a better understanding of what that's like? And so, again, I'm not gonna solve the problem here right now, but I do believe that is something that the schools should be getting involved in, because as our children grow up, they have to deal with a more diverse world. You know, within the United States, it's becoming increasingly diverse, and as the world, as commerce becomes a more global topic, you have to be more comfortable dealing with people from different kinds of backgrounds. I definitely think it's an important topic that our kids should be learning more about.
Thank you.
To be perfectly honest, I didn't decide to throw my name in the hat until the beginning of last week. So any specific programs that are currently in the school district, we're probably all gonna have to get caught to speed on that.
Yeah, we're all first-term people, so.
But I don't think, you know, diversity, equity, and inclusion is specific to just schools. I think it's incredibly important. My firm, Bay State Financial, which is headquartered in Boston, Mass, recently launched a diversity and equity inclusion committee. It's the first year, and I have asked to be part of that committee as well. Now, again, I don't really fit the mold, but I think it's important to have perspective because a lot of the volunteering that I've done has been with inner-city programs to help underprivileged children primarily. So I think it's a wonderful thing, I think it does get a little tricky sometimes, and I think, you know, I don't, certainly don't have the answer, but I'm all for making sure that our children understand that everyone should be accepted regardless of race, religion, gender, identity, sexual preference, you name it. I think that's really important.
Not at the moment, if we have a question?
Yeah, absolutely, we can turn on, yeah.
Um, I would defer to the select board if you had something that you would like to ask next.
Sure. You have one?
Absolutely.
So, our schools have this large OPEB debt, which is, I had the acronym.
Well, they're post-employment benefits.
Thank you. So this is a really large debt, and we currently are not meeting it. So I don't have exact data on this, but we have approximately a million dollars a year that are being incurred in this, these benefits to, you know, these post-employment benefits to retired staff.
Pensions is best, we're talking about here.
Pardon?
Mostly pensions, is that what we're talking about?
No, it's health.
Retired, health insurance.
Mostly healthcare.
And so this is something we need to deal with, and we're, we're not able right now to, so we're not paying this off actively, so we're not, my understanding is we're not, so we have a debt and we're not meeting our current expenses. And so, in light of needing some, some infrastructure change at the school, at the high school, you know, we've got a huge project looming, and we've got a huge debt sitting there. So, you got any ideas?
I just wanted to clarify a couple things.
Sure, please.
It's not a debt, it's an unfunded liability.
Okay.
The servicing cost is roughly about a million dollars a year.
Yeah.
We pay off the serving, servicing cost every year, just like the town of Stowe, okay?
Okay.
We do put extra money in a trust fund, which grows every year.
Okay.
So when I was on the finance committee, we worked with the town to sort of put in that policy, okay? So I'm the current budget and warrant committee chairman. This is our goal last year. Fortunately, Stephen was our chair, got sick, so we didn't get to it. It's already on the agenda for them. So, it's not a debt.
Okay.
It's, it's being serviced every year. We do put a pittance in, about fifty thousand dollars, and it's about a sixty million dollar, you know, fluctuates from forty million to sixty million. So, that gives you guys a little context maybe to how to answer that question.
But it's an unfunded liability, is that correct?
Yes, and just every single municipality has it, from a schools to towns.
So is it a state pension fund that we're part of, is that where the liabilities are too?
Well, I defer probably to Denise on this, because she's probably the subject matter expert, I think, in the room. But my understanding is there's a pension that we fund, and then there's OPEB. And OPEB, why don't you take over?
Yes, so if I may, it's the future health insurance for current employees once they retire. So at some point, those that qualify will retire through the district, they will receive a pension and benefits. It's planning for the. It's planning for the future benefits that, um, cities and towns have not been doing, and it is a huge liability. Um, the question that has, was asked has come up at the last two town meetings, um, really of the school superintendent as to. OPEB and what the plan is for the school, and I, I assume that's why it's being asked tonight, because it is an ongoing matter. It is something that has to be taken into consideration. And it is something we're all faced with.
Right. I, and can I just, uh, when I was on school committee, it came up, I think that was, there was an accounting change or something that suddenly it was like. You have to put it on your books, so we didn't even have it on the books before that. And, but it is, just Rich said, pretty much every district. And every school committee has the same issue, so.
So go look at page fifty-five of the financial statements. I just looked at it last night. The recommended amount is about two million. And we're currently paying about one million, give or take. We're obligated to pay that expense every year. That is like the service expense. Right, please correct me if I'm wrong.
Yes, that is the current retirees' expense. We're planning for the future retirees' expense.
I will tell you, we put fifty thousand, which again, is not a lot of money. Still, I think puts two and fifty thousand, right? So this is all part of the plan. We're just starting this process to really address it. The, uh, the OPEB is on a, on a different level of magnitude. I think it's six million for the town.
Yes, I'm about that.
And it's about, estimated to be sixty million.
Yeah, we're really getting into the weeds here, like as far as, I don't think any of us is gonna solve this problem at this meeting tonight, and.
It's a po- it's, no, but it's a policy question, I think is where she's getting at, so. I, I would just give you the, the information to answer the question, is that it's a goal for the budget warrant committee and a focus of the superintendent. Have you thoughts on it?
Well, so before we start answering the questions, just let me just make sure, what is the question exactly?
Well, let me, yeah, it's, it's kind of a big, a big question. I guess, um, I would say how maybe, um. How would you prioritize our, our spending? You know, given that we have these two things that are somewhat conflicting, um, and they're both important. I mean, that, so, you know, I, I guess, you know, I kind of come from a place where I try to meet my current debts before I incur. Too many more really big ones, you know, so just ha- or, or, you know, just keeping that in balance, so, you know, what's your take on that? Or how would you?
You wanna?
Sure, sure, I can go. My, my answer is, um, really what my goal is for the next five, nine months. If I get on the school committee, it would be to work with the other members of the committee and see what the priority is and where I would best be able to help. Um, and I love to get into the weeds of stuff like that, and like, just do as much research as possible. Um, go out and talk to other districts that are dealing with it, figure out how they're, they're doing it. Um, just build a network of, of people that will be able to help, obviously look at the ones that are doing well with it and not, not the ones that are struggling. Um, but really just read into the policy and ask as many questions as possible. I ask a ton of questions, so that's something you should be forewarned about. If I were to be on the committee.
Yeah, I don't think I have any unique answers. I mean, you definitely got the right approach as far as, you know, learning from your peers and asking a lot of questions. Um, you know, my, my only observation would be, you know, looking at any opportunities there are to stop digging the hole deeper, as it were. I mean, this is a liability that's been developing probably for the last thirty or forty years. Contracts have been negotiated to give deferred benefits without actually putting any money aside for them, you know, that's just a pet peeve of mine that I. That it's something, again, there's been mun- municipalities have been engaging in this practice for the last several decades. This is, you know, the bill's finally come due and is, and, you know, I, I'm not in a position, I don't know how much of a position the committee's in to solve it. But this is one of those things where at some point you're gonna have to probably raise more revenue in order to pay it off. I mean, the alternative, obviously, is to figure out how to impair your programs while you're paying for this rather than, you know, current, um, programs. So, you know, I, I don't have the answer, but those are the kinds of conversations that I think you need to have in order to figure out where your priorities are at this point.
I think it's re- actually a very interesting topic for me, given the fact that I'm a financial advisor, I'm a fiduciary. I work with employee benefit plans, I manage employee benefit plans, I'm in the health insurance industry.
Yeah.
I have a finance degree. I mean.
Yeah.
This is really exciting. I mean, you know, that sounds weird. Don't hold it against me, please. But that's not something that I would be expecting to have to, to, to deal with on the school committee. I'd love be, I would love that. Do I have a solution? No, of course not, right? But I would think I would be in a good spot to provide, provide some perspective on something like that. Because it falls right in line with what I've done my entire career. Will I solve it? I don't know, but, um, I think I could bring some good ideas.
I, you know, just, the reason I say it's been a pet peeve of mine is because, you know, in fact, when I worked for financial, uh, pensions was my area of expertise. So it's like, you know, you look at all the municipalities and how underfunded they are, and you're just like.
That's, that's why.
The last generation got to enjoy this, the next generation's gonna have to pay for it.
Right. And that's why private companies have done away with the pension. But again, health insurance and pension are two different things, and I think there's a lot more flexibility with. Retiree health insurance than there is unfunded liability in the way of a pension. That's a total, two totally different issues. So I would prefer not to deal with the prior one, the unfunded liability in the way of a pension.
Thank you.
True. Hey Megan, one, one other quick thing.
Yep.
I just wanna point out, like, building a new high school and funding OPEB are not in conflict.
Okay.
The town does it, we're building a, the library and we're funding OPEB. In fact, we're ahead, Stowe is ahead, unlike most other communities. And so is the school, but we can talk about it at the school committee.
Okay. Two questions.
Uh, two-part question. How do you see the current school committee and the status of the schools? And what challenges do you think the committee's faced that he'd be engaging in?
Lucky you could always go first.
I.
You didn't go first.
He didn't go first.
Um, I, I don't, I don't think that I'm going to jump on the committee and recommend change this, change that. I think it's more gonna be about learning, you know, the new five-year strategic plan, the high school building project, now the, uh, the unfunded retiree health insurance stuff. Uh, you know, I don't know, this is, uh, last week was when I decided to, to show interest, so there's a lot that we're gonna have to learn in short order. I think the first, I think the next meeting's tomorrow night, right? So I think there's gonna be a lot of learning and assisting and coordinating with. Before we can know really how we're gonna impact. I think there's a lot of topics, um, that are on a lot of people's minds, both. Uh, within the district and also parents, students, all that type of stuff. But, you know, I, I, I think the committee's done a great job with all of that stuff under very difficult times.
Yeah, I mean, so for me, you know, having lived in Stowe for about two years now, I, the district I came from in New Jersey, um, I would characterize as a high-performing district. Um, the flip side of that being that it was a high-stress district. And so, you know, I think that the challenge for Stowe would be, can we be a more high-performing district without raising the level of stress for the students? Because, um, you know, when we moved here, my kids were like, I already know all this stuff, like, you know, the, the stuff they were learning in the next year. Stuff they learned a year or two earlier back where we were in New Jersey. And so I kind of get the impression that there might be an opportunity to raise the bar, as it were. But again, we being sensitive to the idea that the, the trade-off there is what kind of mental health consequences are there? So you definitely have to be mindful of that as you try to raise the bar, as it were. So that's something I would investigate if I got onto the committee.
Um, I think over the, I think, I think that the main focus of the school committee, and they've been doing a fantastic job of it, it has really been COVID. In the, in the past year or two. Um, and obviously they had to hire the new superintendent as well, so they had a lot of things going on. Um, but I, I'm expecting over the next nine months really to just, um, see a lot of focus on budget. Uh, I know that has to be built out, and I think the teachers' contract's up for negotiation this year. Um, so that's what I was foreseeing for the next nine months, but anything that pops, happy to help out at where I can.
Those are the two subcommittees that you would sit on, negotiations and budget and warrant.
Unfortunately, with me.
Okay.
I was supposed to say that part out loud.
So, um, so I, I was on school committee, um, and I would say, well, first, thank you three for doing it. Thank you three, and Alex, wherever you are, for putting your names up, because I think it's the hardest job. I mean, maybe planning board is right up there, but to me, the hardest part is because it's a regional school district, there's a lot of committees to be on, right? And that was in a normal year, and now we got a building committee and then the negotiations this year, so. Um, but it's also hard because there's three really different towns involved in the decision-making. So I guess my question is, um, you know, particularly around budget priorities, but how would you, how, how would you, uh. Think about addressing the balancing of the different needs of the towns? We're talking about Lancaster, which is in forever tough financial position. Bolton and Stowe have a much easier time, I would say, with the school budget. Stowe had the best, I mean, we, we got, we looked at the best this year in terms of, of the impact on the budget, but. You, when you're on the school committee, you're representing all three towns, not just Stowe. So that, that's my question. How would you address that sort of challenge?
I think that I would just need to, to have a lot of conversations and really get an understanding of what's going on in, in each of the towns. And just listen to all opinions, and I know it can get heated, especially when we're talking about money. But my goal in anything that I do is always to try to find a common ground with people. Um, because there's strong feelings with them negotiating the contracts, there's gonna be strong emotions because there, it's the teachers' salaries at hand. So, um, just really talking to as many people as I can, understanding how they're feeling. And trying to work with all of them to come up with the, the best plan for the, the next budget round.
Yeah, I mean, the district I was in, uh, that I was on the committee before was also a regional district that had two towns involved. And there was a pretty well, um, balanced formula in place already as far as determining how the funding was allocated between the two towns. So I've definitely looked to see how the formula is determined here and, you know, maybe compare it to other regional districts that might have similar demographic makeup. And see, you know, is, are we doing it the best way possible, you know? Again, it, it's like Maureen's part, to ask a lot of questions and, you know, see, are there other ways that other places are doing it that might be better? Um, you know, and as far as serving a commi- committees, I mean, like, the idea that we might be going into contract negotiation with teachers sounds exciting to me. That was like one of the last things that I got involved in, the last time I was on the committee in terms of, you know, there's not actually typically not a lot of wiggle room. As far as where, how much you're going to raise, it's usually like, how do we compare to the town next door? And, you know, what's inflation look like? Those are usually like the parameters. And so it usually gets into more of the weeds about, you know, how do you structure that? How do you, you know, align, I think that key, one of the key issues we faced before was how do we align their copays on drugs? So that their incentives are more closely aligned with the districts. And, you know, it's kind of the nitty-gritty details that you get into negotiations to try and, you know, smooth things out. But anyhow, just getting back to your question about, I think that really comes down to like, are we using the best formula right now to balance the, the ability to pay? And the demands of each of the communities, so I think that's what we look into.
Yeah, I mean, I would just add that, again, being in finance, I like that stuff. Um, I'm sure it's very, very difficult. Uh, and I'm very well aware of the differences between the three different towns in our district. And just from coaching basketball, for example, that had, uh, not just the three towns, but also some other towns. You get to see quite disparity between, um, Stowe versus Lancaster, for example. So, um, I think, you know, again, I'm comfortable with budgeting. I would certainly have to learn a lot, uh, with the current school committee members. And I have built a pretty vast network of, um, parents and teachers throughout the district, just from being, you know, invisible for so long. And I think that could help, because contract negotiations can be very difficult. Um, we're talking about people's money. And that's a very high emotion and stressful event, uh, especially right now, given what we're going through, uh, as an economy. So, um, yeah, excited, but I think I'll be able to help and, you know, make some good things happen.
Okay.
Hmm, okay.
So I don't have any other questions because I know it's still mine.
I, I was hoping you would, so it's fine.
Excellent.
Um, I guess if you were to pick one personality trait that you possess that you feel like would be your greatest asset? Bringing it forward to the committee, what would it be and why?
I think mine's empathy. Um, I really like to put myself in other people's shoes. Um, because I just feel like that always helps me get to a good, a good solution. I don't like when there's problems between people, so as, as I, as much as I can learn about someone and why they're feeling something. Or why they need something, then we can usually work it out and figure out, um, a good path forward. Empathy.
I'll go last this time.
Okay. I would say passion. I think if you're not passionate about something, you're not gonna do a great job. And I certainly didn't know I'd be doing this, uh, prior to last week. Um, but I'm committed to it, and if I'm selected, I'm gonna do a great job.
I would say my collaborative spirit, you know, I, my default for helping, trying to solve problems is consulting with other people and get everybody's input. And trying to come up with a solution that takes everybody's point of view into consideration. And we talked about diversity before, this is a great example of solving problems. You get people with diverse opinions and backgrounds. Solution that leverages all their different skills and abilities, so that's really the way I like to solve problems, with other people to get it done.
Thanks.
You have any other questions? No? Anyone else? I will take a motion from someone to nominate a member.
So I'll make a motion, um, acknowledging that I'm really grateful and Rich will back me up on this, three people with finance background.
Yeah.
I'm ecstatic, because that didn't happen when I was on school committee, so thank you all again. Um, but I will make a motion to nominate Maureen Mazone to take the school committee position.
Anyone can second. Um, oh, you second? Okay, great. Um, so all in favor? Do we have to do a roll call for this?
Well, you should technically, because you're still on Zooms.
Oh, great.
Megan, do we, I'm sorry, point of order.
Yes.
Do you, um, typically hold discussion after a motion is made, or?
It's possible.
Yes, we do.
Yes.
Okay.
So any, any further discuss- that's what I should have done. You're absolutely right, this is a brand new.
I think that I would like to weigh in just very quickly.
Yes.
Reiterate what Ellen just said. So very grateful for the three of you. I think that if we had three spots, I'd be very welcome. Um, I would also like to say that I view this process, in what we're doing here, we are acting as a, as a proxy for the populace. In that, uh, we had a lot of feedback from re- the residents of Stowe. Many, many letters were written, many emails, more were sent. And so my decision in, and I won't speak for everybody here, but I just wanted to put on the record that my decision is based upon me acting in. What the residents, acting in a way that the residents have asked me to act. Um, because I am not any kind of dictator. I don't think that it's my job to necessarily choose. Um, other than to act in accordance with what the residents have kind of asked us to do. So, I will use that as my guiding star.
Just, I have a, I have a point of order question, just in terms of, who all is eligible to vote on this?
We all.
All of us are.
All seven of you?
Yeah.
So it's a combined committee effectively?
It's a joint appointment, yeah, becau- because of the nature of the appointment, it's a joint appointment, yeah.
And Megan, you're the fifth member who is absent, right?
We do, but I, as long as we have a quorum, like even if the three of you didn't show up, we still would be able to be the quorum of it, so, yep.
I just wanna add, I think.
Yes.
It's an embarrassment of riches that the, uh, that you guys are here.
It is.
You get very qualified, and I can tell you the, the members, the school committee members, uh, from the other towns are just like, this is. My kid, this happened on our town. So, seriously.
That's, yeah, yeah, absolutely, right.
That's good.
You have another point of order, yeah?
Yeah. So one person's been nominated.
Sure.
If we vote on that one person, that's it?
It is, it's a ma- it's a majority.
Will you each have a separate vote for who you'd like it to be?
It's not, it's not ranked voting.
No, not.
Ranked voting.
It's not ranked.
Nominate multiple.
And we can nominate, yeah, so I, I have been on this committee when we've nominated multiple chairs before. And so when it's not a majority, then we would go back and take a second nomination. So we haven't gotten to the point of the vote yet, but when, if, if it is, then we certainly will throw it back out and I'll ask for another motion. Um, having said that, uh, we'll do a roll call vote, so. Um, all. So, um, all in favor, sorry, all in favor, um, vote now, vote now.
And the motion is for Maureen.
And the motion is for Maureen, yes. So all in favor?
But we will. But we will do a roll call.
I will do a roll call. Ellen?
Yes.
Hector?
Yes.
Courtney?
Aye.
Leah?
Aye.
Karen?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. So that is unanimous. Um, thank you very much. Thank you to all of you for coming and putting your names forward. There are a million other volunteer positions in this town. If there's, including finance. No, finance is full right now, sorry. There are other ones, um, as well, so.
No.
Thank you all.
We'll find you something.
For your time.
There are plenty, but not those two.
It's a nice list on our website. Yes. All right. Um, having said that, I will take a motion from Hector, um, for this. Yes.
You just took a motion. What motion are you taking now?
I don't think we need to do a. We have to do a full motion to, we voted.
Yeah, you just took a motion and a vote.
Oh, we don't have to do this one?
This one? No, you just did this.
Oh, all right, all right, I'm off, we did that. Thank you for coming to our very ordinary.
Just another point of order. The town clerk will perhaps be in charge to do the swearing in.
Yes. So she'll get, will send, uh, my office will send an appointment letter with instructions on how to get sworn in.
Okay, tomorrow night is not the expectation for your attendance.
Um, well, since the town clerk that presented, that just walked in, are you, will you guys be in the office tomorrow?
Yes.
So we can do a swearing in at some point tomorrow.
Okay.
So we can do it ahead of the letter because, um, we probably won't get the letter out tomorrow morning, but you can touch base with the clerk's office and they'll swear you in.
Okay.
Fantastic.
And I'll just be until the conclusion of the next election.
Yes.
I just wanted to say thank you for your time.
Thank you, thank you truly for everyone. We really appreciate it. And for being part of this.
You didn't have any bad choices, so.
No, no, absolutely, no, no.
I hope everyone pulls papers in the spring.
Yeah, I mean, seriously, there is an election in spring. First of all, right.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Appreciate you.
Yes.
We won't let you.
All right, so we're gonna jump back.
You have an opening, let me know.
All right, we're gonna jump back to, um, we have a couple of things, um, on our agenda that I skipped. Um, I have select board correspondence discussion on here. Thought we were taking this off for next time. But we certainly can have a discussion about it now.
If you want to table it.
You can table it.
Yeah, can we just table it until next time? Sorry. Can we also table the MBTA advisory board? I'm just kidding.
Can if we don't have, let me look at the deadline.
I think it's quick.
And it's gonna be.
I don't think they have a deadline on this, just according to our records. So they'd like you to fill the vacancies. So if you, you certainly can table it if you'd like.
According to the, what I read, you are the.
Yes.
And we like that.
Yeah, it's fine. You can, I will take a motion to just make it me.
Okay.
And they'll send me information about what I need to do.
Right.
Um, so I don't know that, I think you already are it. I don't believe you need a motion unless that you wanted to change the representative.
But it makes it, I mean, the letter made it sound like it's.
It is me.
But it, oh.
Oh, but I could appoint a designate if I want to. But it's showing that our designee.
Says it's vacant.
Vacant.
I think, I mean, I personally.
Just do the motion.
Let's just do the motion, yeah.
So I move to appoint Megan Birch-McMichael as representative for Stowe to the MBTA advisory board.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, yeah.
All right, that's unanimous. I'll vote for myself. All right. Um, I hope everyone saw the email from a couple of weeks ago, uh, from a group asking us to sign a proclamation that October, is it October?
Yeah. Oh.
September.
September, I think.
Oh, that September is childhood cancer awareness month. I'm certainly happy to read the proclamation. If anyone wants to listen to me. Or we've all read it. Do I, should I read it for the record? I can read it for the record. Um, proclamation, childhood cancer awareness month, September twenty twenty-two. Whereas the American Cancer Fund for Children and Kids Cancer Connection report cancer is the leadest, leading cause of death by disease among US children between infancy and age fifteen. This tragic disease is detected in more than sixteen thousand of our country's young people every year. An estimated forty, four hundred thousand children and adolescents are diagnosed with cancer globally each year. And whereas one in five of our nation's children loses his or her battle with cancer, many infants, children and teens will suffer from long-term effects of comprehensive treatment, including secondary cancers. And whereas founded nearly thirty years ago by Steven Firestein, a member of the philanthropic Max Factor Cosmetics family, the American Cancer Fund for Children Incorporated, Kids Cancer and Kids Cancer Connection Incorporated and Lions Clubs International are dedicated to helping these children and their families. And whereas the American Cancer Fund for Children and Kids Cancer Connection provide a variety of vital patient psychosocial services to children undergoing cancer treatment at Boston Children's Hospital, Tuss Children's Hospital, Shriners Children's Boston, Dana Farber Children's Cancer Center, Mass General Hospital for Children, as well as participating hospitals throughout the country, thereby enhancing the quality of life for these children and their families. And whereas the American Cancer Fund for Children and Kids Cancer Connection also sponsor toy distributions, Laughter Noon, Laughter is Healing, positive appearance programs, pet assisted therapy, KCC Supercar Experience, educational programs and hospital celebrations in honor of a child's determination and bravery to fight the battle against childhood cancer. Now therefore be it resolved that the select board hereby proclaims September twenty twenty-two as childhood cancer awareness month in the town of Stowe and encourages all residents to acknowledge the same. Do we have any discussion about this?
We don't know, and there's no specific programs happening.
No. Any question? No. Hector? No. Courtney?
No.
All right, I will take the motion now.
I move to approve and sign a proclamation for childhood cancer awareness month as presented at this meeting.
Second.
Any further discussion? And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that's unanimous. All right, thank you. Alrighty, we filled the school committee. All right, and now. Oh my God, why can't I get through it? Okay. Um, next on our agenda is the town administrators' performance evaluation and fiscal year twenty-three goals. So, um, in our packets, we have, um, the narrative, um, the overall summary. We have the average rating, um, full disclosure, uh, I believe that not all four of us weighed in on every single, was it, was everyone, no?
I don't see the individual.
Okay, that's right, and no one else does. Um, okay, so, okay, so, uh, the average rating is all in there. There's a narrative that is a compilation of all of the comments that were given. Hector obviously did not give any comments. And so I will open it up to board members to, let's talk about, um, yeah, let's talk about the, the different, um, sections for sure. I have a couple of questions, but I will, I will save mine to the end. So does anyone want to speak on the different comments?
I mean, just the overall, I think it's important to say her overall evaluation was four point six two out of five. So it was a very strong evaluation again.
Um, yes. Um, hang on one sec, I'm just, Courtney, did you have anything you wanted to say? First, are you?
Not.
Not yet, okay. Um, okay, so if no one else wants to speak on this right now, I will.
I think Hector.
Oh, Hector wanted to. I know, I know, but Hector didn't do anything with it, so I, let me just, I just wanted to go through it quickly. I will say that this is a draft of the evaluation, given the compilation of everything. And I think that it is the purview of the board to decide what goes out in the public record for this. So I certainly think, I had some questions about some of the comments that were in here that felt, it, they felt to me that I won, I knew that I did not make the comment, so that I would like some more clarification, um, from board members um, as to the section. So I think my biggest question was in the leadership and supervision one. And I will say that I struggled with this section, um, because I do not, I'm not on the staff. And so I questioned afterwards whether or not this is something that any of us are effectively able to comment on because we do not, unless we're soliciting surveys from the staff, anonymous surveys, which I think is something that could be done in future reviews, I don't know how we best rate that. So I had some questions, if anybody wanted to speak to, how they commented on that section. Cause it is the section that has the lowest average rating.
Well, I'd like to say that I agree with you, that I, I feel as though I don't have an easy way to, to know what Denise's interactions are with, with staff. I'm not supposed to be here in the building checking on that, and I'm not. So I, I think it might be interesting to review the process for this question.
Okay. None of the board wants to speak to it. I, Denise is fully, uh, able to ask questions since this is her evaluations, but I will allow you. Oh, Hector, I'm gonna let you speak first, sorry.
Thank you. Obviously, I didn't have any input into this, but just based on a few encounters I've had with Denise as a private citizen, I definitely don't agree with this evaluation because she either really walks on water or she rolls in the mud, depending on which part of the paragraph you're reading. And I don't think, I think she's somewhere in between. Definitely not a god and not whatever else other parody you can make it. But my, I was astounded to read this. I'm new to the public sector. Being in the private sector, if any employee in any company that I worked for had a review like this, it was either because they were being pushed out or they were about to be fired. And if any employee in the company I've worked for had their review of this public, that's an HR nightmare. I understand open meeting law. We have to make a lot of things public, but I did some research and found out that there were ways this could have been done privately. It didn't have to be in public. There was a presentation by the Mass Select Board Association to the Mass Municipals Association about ways, things like this could have been done privately. And one of the comments made was, if you're looking to weaponize this to motivate the employee to change their behavior, that's the worst thing you can do. And honestly, this is what I read. There's a lot of contradictory stuff, obviously. No single person wrote any one of these paragraphs. And almost every paragraph, she starts off as being awesome. Actually, in all paragraphs, she starts off as being awesome, but in almost every paragraph, she ends up being terrible. There's even one section where the current chair compares behavior with prior chair, which almost insinuates some type of personal issue here that I don't see how that should ever be in an employee's evaluation. That's a private matter. Well, obviously, we're public officials, so it's not private, but it certainly shouldn't be on Denise's evaluation and hashed out there. I really wondered, is there any way we can go back and redo this? And find, I mean, Denise is a human being first. And second, she's the town administrator, the highest positioned person in our town. I don't think this affords her the compassion that any human being should be given, nor the respect that her position is deserving. So I'm wondering, is there any way we can redo this? And A, present this as a unified voice, as one board. B, give her the compassion she deserves as a human being. And C, afford her the respect that she deserves as the town administrator. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Hector.
Thanks for saying it that way.
Thank you.
Well put.
Yep, absolutely. So Denise, do you have any particular sections you wanna?
I have, I have a lot to say. So I was quite honestly shocked when I read it. Um, I appreciate the point scoring, but I don't feel that that matches the comments. Honestly, words were used that I've never been called, insensitive, disrespectful, unprofessional. It talks about that I have a staff favorite who continues to be recognized while other hardworking staff are not. Uh, since my last review, I've made forty recognitions at select board meetings of employees, board members, departments. Um, I have all the dates and names, if you'd like me to read them, of everybody that I have recognized. Um, I have recognized departments multiple times. I have recognized employees multiple times. Nobody stands out as being a favorite that I'm recognizing over and over. I don't know where that came from. I would completely disagree with that. It's the review states that I need to show more respect for disagreeable residents and that I have an unbalanced sensitivity with regard to staff and residents. I would again, wholeheartedly challenge those statements. Not only have I, do I pride myself on being respectful to residents, I have an open door policy. Anyone can walk in my office and they do. People come in on all sorts of matters, police matters, uh, traffic matters, resident issues, neighbor fights. I, in fact, I've even mended some of the ongoing residential issues and staff issues that were here prior to my arrival because I feel I bring a level of diplomacy that maybe wasn't here before. There is a section of the review that once again talks about me serving on the library building committee. I feel like that's a personal attack. Uh, the select board took a vote to put me on the library building committee. That issue is a select board issue. It should not be a personal attack against me because the board voted to put me in a role. And for the record, Bill served as a voting member on committee this year and got paid additional money to serve as project manager for projects that he did here. There was a comment that I should have insisted that there was visibility from an elected board, meaning the board of health. I have zero control over elected boards and I think had I overstepped to make the elected board more visible, I would have been reprimanded on that because I know my role. I know my place with this board, with elected boards and with appointed boards. And I would never, I would never tell an elected board how they should be acting. There are comments about me attending standing committee meetings on a regular basis. Quite frankly, again, that makes no sense to me. Um, committee chairs have expressed a different opinion. The capital planning chair has stated that he appreciates me attending. The finance committee chair appreciates me attending. It, it states that staff supervising committees that I intimidate them. I, I, again, I don't know where the whole intimidation comes in. This has been a repeated factor over the last several months. I don't attend staff supervising committee meetings unless I'm invited. I don't go to them regularly. I attend the financial committees. I attended the library building committees, which was listed as a positive in my review. So again, I, I, I don't quite understand where that's coming from. The review references that there's an expectation that the town administrator will share all inquiries and applications from residents regarding appointments. Again, the board had that discussion in a public meeting and voted to only put forward the candidates that I am recommending. So I am once again being penalized for decisions of this board. I, I think, quite frankly, I think much of the verbiage is unfair. I think it's unprofessional and I think it's inappropriate. Um, and I think it's a personal attack. It does not, in my opinion, represent my work. It represents me personally. And I don't think that belongs in my evaluation. Something that will be out there and post on our website, that anyone Googles my name, this is what is gonna come up. Cause this to me does not represent me. Um, I will say, I see a number of, and I will get choked up, so I apologize. I see a number of employees here. Feel free to ask them if you'd like. A, a number of employees have come up, come up to me since reading my review. I've gotten calls from residents after re, me, reading my review. And wanted to offer their wholehearted support behind me because they did not feel that these comments were fair, um, which I would agree with. So, um, that's my position. I, I hope you take Hector's. I hope you take Hector's recommendation up to heart to reevaluate this. Perhaps edit the verbiage, review what's being written, because I don't think it's fair as an adequate representation of my job here. And just to the last point, in the future, I have no problem with you if you decided to do and ask Dolores to put out a review to employees and get feedback on my performance here. I have no problem with that because I'm completely confident about how the employees here feel. Now, I can't say that about 100% of the employees, but I think just in hearing comments, especially over the last few days, on how much better things have been, how the difference in leadership and supervision has changed. People have someone to go to, they can ask questions. There is an open door. People are not intimidated or nervous walking into my office as they were in the past. And that it's been a very positive change here, and that is coming from employees. And again, I will not speak for them. You are welcome to speak to anybody you would like and get their feedback. But that is, that is my response to my evaluation this evening.
Thank you, Denise. Anyone else from the board?
Yeah. So of the four members that made, made reviews, we only have three present tonight. And I think we need to have a full discussion of the members of how to edit this review. I would say that it's clear from the way this is presented right now that we are not unanimous and that there is a member, I believe, who feels very differently than the others. It's not myself.
Can I just? So I guess, so obviously, I mean, it's gonna be, people think, presume that I wrote these things. I didn't expect, when I wrote the review, I didn't expect to see every word that, I mean, I wrote it and actually said, I'm actually super supportive. I mean, I really do think you're doing an amazing job. I had suggestions for, for improvement that I thought was part of the evaluation. I honestly didn't expect to see every line in here because I actually said, it's not personal. I'm trying to, and I should have met with you first. So I was actually pretty surprised. I was like, she, I mean, that was Dolores's choice to put the actual words in, so I apologize. And I totally support Hector and Megan, I assume you support the idea.
Yes.
Rewriting this, because I really had no intention of be, I actually still, I mean, I don't, I mean, it's interesting to hear Hector's response, like, this sounds like something, somebody you're trying to get rid of, 4.7, you're trying to get rid of someone. So I'm a nonprofit person, maybe I'm more critical. I write a lot, so, but I, so I openly and directly apologize. Because you are doing an amazing job and you've changed the town. I mean, I, there are words in here that I wrote about you've changed the culture here and that all for the better. So I'm feeling very embarrassed.
So I think what I'm hearing is that we need to go back to the drawing board and really do some good line edits of this before this. I mean, obviously, this is in our packet now, but I don't, I would not feel comfortable with this being an accurate representation of what Denise has done. I am, listen, I've only been on this board for a few months, but seeing all these department heads here, former selectmen, I, this is, this is not something I would have seen my first couple of months on the board, right? Nobody would have shown up to support.
And I want to clarify, I did not ask anybody to.
No, I know, I know. So I think, I think we've got a good answer moving forward that, A, we're not accepting this as it stands, that we need to really go back through. I don't know if each of us wanna just, excuse me, send our own line edits back to Dolores and then sort of see where that lands, if that's something that is amenable to everyone and also does not violate a law that I don't know about. No, that would work. Yes, yes, Hector.
As I mentioned, there is reference to ways that this can be done by assigning someone to individually evaluate. Well, it mentions town employees, and you know better than I do.
Town administrators are public.
This is such a weird.
Which I understand, but there's one that doesn't exclude the town administrator. One of us could be assigned to evaluate, or it doesn't say anything about town administrator. And I see Jim Salvi raising a hand, who I know knows more about the law than I do about.
Oh, go ahead, Jim, okay. Jim.
I was just gonna recommend, before you start doing.
You gotta say your name front.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I bet you forgot.
My, times change. Jim Salvi, 74, West Acton Road. Before you start doing any portion of the town administrator's performance evaluation in anything that looks like private, run it by town council, please.
Yes, yes.
Because that doesn't sound right. May I continue on one thing?
Absolutely.
I was on the board for, well, I've been off the board now for three months, and I, as you probably noticed, I've studiously been avoiding coming to the meetings, although I have watched a few on YouTube. I had to come here when I saw the comments in this performance evaluation. And I just want to go on record and say, I was on this board for nine months of the evaluation period, nine of the 12. I don't recognize the woman that is described in some of these comments. I, I don't, I was an active member of this board, and I don't know what conduct gave rise to certain things, words like peevish. I haven't used the word peevish maybe ever. I understand, but you know, you just don't use certain words. You don't expect to see them in public, but nonetheless, they were used. I just gotta go on record in saying, I completely dissociate, I would say, I had nothing to do with this evaluation, but I would completely dissociate myself from this. I'm a little appalled by, but please check with town council before you do anything, anything that looks like private.
I can open it up to anyone else who would like to say anything.
Chief?
So I like your comments about talking to staff. I think if, first of all, the board has been extremely supportive of my efforts and what I've been doing with the police department, making changes and moving forward. And I couldn't have done any of that without Denise. She's been, I wouldn't have taken this job if there was somebody else in that seat. And I couldn't be doing my job if somebody else was in that seat. The fact that the door is always open, the fact that I have the support. Even when I took over as acting chief, I needed that support, and I got that from Jim. I reached out to him first, and that's continued through Denise. And there wouldn't be an opportunity for any of the change that, not only the community, but the residents, the guests, the board was looking for me to make if I didn't have Denise to guide me, which I, it's almost on a daily basis that I am reaching out to look for guidance. So I want to say, first of all, thank you to Denise. And for me, that open door policy is always, has always been there. And not only for me, but for all the other employees that I've talked to. So if you're gonna evaluate someone on their role of having interactions with us, I think that it's important that you ask us, and ask us, like, how are we dealing with it? I understand from 25 years with the town that the role of the board has changed and that there used to be a policy where, you know, the board members would come in and had direct contact with the member, with the employees. That, for us, caused a lot of issues back over the years. You know, talk about intimidation. Officers were intimidated to make action based on the single act of a board member to take action using their police authority, and that was not okay. So the fact that we have the separation, while we are still welcoming to have discussions, I've never heard of Denise saying, no, a board member can't come and talk to us directly, but it has to be about certain things and not exhibiting someone's self as a, as a board member. So for me, that's been extremely helpful. You know, that for my officers, it's been extremely helpful because, again, we've had a history of where that, that was not always the case. And I can tell you that I did not read all of what was in there. I wanted more to speak from the heart, that I, we couldn't go forward, again, as the police department, without her guidance. She understands what the role of the board is and how we want to take a different perspective on things from law enforcement, but she also understands not only how to help guide managers, because we do have a lot of unions, and she has the experience on that. So as a police manager, it really helps me to navigate those waters as well. So I think if you want to look at writing an evaluation on somebody and from the perspective of who she oversees, well, talk to us. I have no problem telling exactly like, how she affected my department. I can't talk for other departments, but I can tell you from mine, it's been probably the most positive interaction I've had. I would not come over here to this building for a long time. This was not a welcoming place, and now I feel that it is. And I think it's for any employee. I made tremendous effort in making this better. We brought in Dolores. We have a whole HR department now. So, I mean, that is gigantic. So I can't express my support enough for Denise, and you know, thank you.
Debbie Woods, Great Road. I've been in the corporate world, well, I've just recently retired, but I've been in the corporate world many, many years. And not only did I write reviews, receive reviews, and read reviews, this wasn't a review. This was a personal attack, and I think it is embarrassing. I was at least happy to hear of the apology, but the way I also look at it is, one of the comments was, well, I didn't, I didn't write those words. I don't think Dolores made up the words. Those words are part of the review process. Those, these comments are embarrassing. I think we owe it to Denise to take that out of the packet. That does not belong in the packet, because while you said it's not public, it is public. It's in the public forum. That needs to come out. Redo the, if you have to talk to council, do it. That needs, that needs to come out because it's inaccurate, it's wrong, it's disgraceful, it's embarrassing. I also find it very interesting that the one board that has a code of conduct in place, you can laugh, Courtney, it's the one board that has a code of conduct of how you treat others, and this board didn't do it, or at least a member of this board did not do it. And that, Mr. Justus, is embarrassing, and that is wrong. You broke your own code of conduct. That is wrong. This board owes Denise an apology, and we owe it to her to take that out of the packet.
I apologize, and I, I didn't say that, I didn't say those words. I didn't expect to see them in the summary, because it's supposed to be a summary, not a word for word.
You wrote the words, you wrote the words, they came out.
I also wrote, which wasn't included, in the final comments, I said, you know, my overall comments, communication, she's changed the norm for still. More equally acknowledged contributions of different department heads, I still stand by that. C and D, we're incredibly lucky to have her, and I hope my comments don't imply I'm not incredibly grateful for her leadership and her frustration.
But the work also.
That said, I am going to resign from the select board because I think I've really damaged the reputation of Denise and it's lost the credibility of the select board. So I will be resigning after this meeting.
But it needs to come out of the packet.
And I think just, I think the easiest thing is take my evaluation out of this and rewrite it. I mean, I don't think.
I think we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to have some other, other conversations. But yes, absolutely. Okay, we're gonna take it out of the packet. We are all very heated in this moment. I think we're not moving any, well, the other thing we need to do is talk about your goals, but I am going to exercise my right as the chair, and we are going to move that to the next meeting. Okay, we still do need to approve minutes.
May I make a comment?
Yes.
Ellen, I would hate to see you resign.
Yeah.
I, I appreciate the sentiment, but I think we can work through this. I would ask you to think about it before you rush to resign. I think.
I would second Denise's. I think there's things that we have to work through here. I do not, I think that you have a voice. I think you have a perspective. I think that we all need to figure out how to work together with that. I think that this review went off the rails, and so we've gotta, we gotta figure that out for Denise, right? So I'm going to suggest that we, I'm going to take a comment from Courtney. You're gonna have to hate me.
I'd like to third that I would not like to see you leave, Ellen. And I'd like to say, from the point of view of our new empathetic school committee member, that I think that we each have our own way of expressing things, and we each have our own sense of language. And I think giving constructive criticism is incredibly useful, and I think it's important to choose words carefully. But I see you as a bright and constructive, sometimes, member of our select board, Ellen. And I, I think that, a friend of mine says, the brighter the light, the darker the shadow. So I think that we all, the reason I smirked when Deb said that we're the one group in town with a code of conduct is that I, we, we put that in place because we're, we have moments where we have difficulty with this. And so I would, I feel that, that working through a difficult time makes us a stronger group, makes us a stronger organization, makes us a stronger community. And having these discussions in public makes us a stronger community. And recognizing that we've made a mistake and that we didn't, we didn't mean to do harm is, is, makes us a stronger, makes stronger relationships. And so I think if you, if you want to stay on the board, that, you know, I would be happy if we could redact some of your comments from this, from this review, and that's all I have to say.
Okay. Hector, do you have anything else you'd like?
Yeah, I'd like to add, I just got here, so. I have a lot to learn, and I hope you're still one of my teachers, as everybody else will be.
All right. We're still gonna move forward with the business of this. What I'm gonna request from the board members, and if you, in order not to, I can ask you to have Dolores send us the review. The four of us that were part of it, Hector, you certainly can be part of it as well. I would like to have her send it to us. I would like each board member to remove the comments that they do not want in it. And I would like that sent back to Dolores by next week. So then that can be included in our next packet. I think that's the most equitable way to do it. I think that as, I will say, I was not on the board when Bill got reviews, but did you fill out a form like this?
We did for a while and stopped.
Okay.
But not quite that far.
So if it's my recollection, when Denise started, this is something that the board came up with. So the board can now change it. And I think we're realizing where we're running up into some real problems. I think anything that has to do with staffing, if we don't get actual feedback from actual staff members, then we're not being equitable to Denise in our review. And so that's what I want to do with the review as it stands. I don't know that we, I don't, I don't know. I've not been in this position before to like, re-review you, because if that's the case, then I guess we could redo it.
You can, you can do whatever you want.
Okay, well then, let me take a straw poll of the board. I'm looking at you.
And can I, I would ask that you don't do the.
Don't do that, okay.
I think if you review the comments.
Redact comments, okay.
I would ask that you don't re-review.
Okay. So Dolores will get it to us. Does this seem doable to you and to you and to myself? And we'll let Engaborg know to go through it. We'll get one that feels like it's the most, not becoming, for Denise, for it to be a review for that. And can we also remove the one from the packet that is? And can we also remove the one from the packet that is online right now?
Well, we can remove it from online. It's still public record. Someone could still request it because it was part of the packet.
Okay, all right. Well, I guess hopefully if there's a second version of it out, people will look at that one first. All right, we're gonna move on to the meeting minutes from August twenty-third. Does anyone have any comments? Another job well done. To Joyce, did you have any?
I love Joyce's minutes.
I know, they're so good.
Rarely find any inaccuracies. Tonight, they were accurate.
Excellent. Mr. Sturgis, do you have any notes?
Nope.
Mr. Casandos.
Does someone else wanna make a motion maybe instead of Hector?
Oh, yeah, Ellen or Courtney, can you make a motion because he's not gonna be able to vote on them?
Move to accept the me, meeting minutes of the August twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two meeting as drafted.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Any abstentions?
Abstention?
Oh, any abstentions?
Abstain.
God. All right. All right, um, does anyone have any questions, comments on the correspondence that we got? Did you have a question about that? Do you have any? No? Hector, no?
Nope.
All righty, I will.
He doesn't know about this one.
Oh, yeah, so I'll take a, a motion to adjourn.
I move it with adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? All right, thank you for coming to this select board meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. And best of luck. I hope you hit the ground running. Sounds like you're gonna.
Tomorrow.
I know.
They got you in there.